Good evening. Welcome to the City of Peoria City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 19th. Would you please rise, observe a moment of silence, and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Rivero.
... in the fire of the United States of America and to a body for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rivero.
Here.
Councilmember Ames.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Karla.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Council liaison Gilene.
Here.
Council liaison Pryor.
Here.
This is the final call to submit speaker request forms. Speaker request forms can be found in the lobby. Fill it out, give it to the Clerk, and we'll call upon you at the appropriate time. The first item up tonight is a presentation. It's the 13th Annual Celebrate the Constitution Contest. My microphone should be on. Good? Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight to the 13th Annual Celebrate the U.S. Constitution Contest. The purpose of the Celebrate the Constitution Contest is to promote an understanding of the United States Constitution to school-aged children. Students participate in the contest by submitting posters and essays about the U.S. Constitution. The students with the winning poster or essay will receive a Target gift certificate tonight. For the past several years, the City of Peoria has sponsored the contest with the help of the Peoria Unified School District and Deer Valley Unified School District. In particular, with the support of Public Relations Department of the school districts, this has become a very successful program. I'd like to extend a special thanks to Councilman Edwards, John Edwards, for his assistance in the contest activities and his efforts to engage the youth to participate in local government. Councilman Edwards championed the idea of having youth council liaisons, and today we have two high school seniors that participated in our council meetings. I'd like to introduce our youth council liaisons, Jacob, oops, Jacob and Thomas. These two young men represent the youth of our community and probably future leadership in this city. To all students in the audience, I encourage you to become active in your community. We need your participation. You can serve as a member on the Youth Advisory Committee and maybe someday as a youth council liaison. If you're interested, call the council office for more information, and we can set you up. Okay? Thank you. With that said, we're going to move along to the fun part here. City of Peoria, 13th Annual Celebrate the Constitution Contest winners. Will I announce the name of the winner? If you will come up here in front, we will give you your certificate. Then we'll pose for pictures. I assume the press will want pictures, and so will your parents. Third place kindergarten, for the kindergarten element, third place with just $25 gift certificate goes to Joshua Moore. (APPLAUSE). Howdy. Congratulations. Uncle Sam.
(INAUDIBLE) congratulations.
And finally, your certificate. I want to apologize in advance if I butcher anybody's names here. Second place is a $50 certificate to Kayla Depew. Congratulations. Uncle Sam.
(INAUDIBLE) congratulations.
And for first place in the kindergarten category, it's a $100 certificate to Maureen Ingram. Congratulations. Okay. Hey, hold on a second. Maureen, come back over here just for a second, okay? He's going to take your picture. Thank you. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 gift certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate goes to Evelyn Valenzuela Villa. Congratulations. Next category is fifth and sixth grades. There were 25 total submissions. Third place for the $50 certificate is Christopher Welsh from Coyote Hells on One Elementary. Congratulations. Second place, $100 certificate, Brooklyn Naylor from Apache. Congratulations. First place, $200 certificate, Connor Stewart, Apache. Congratulations. Stand here and get mugged. There are a total of 54 submissions from the seventh and eighth grade category. Third place, $50 certificate, Natalie Van Auerke, Oakwood. Congratulations. No do-overs. Okay. Second place, $100 certificate, Isabel Anchondo. I'm sorry. From Passay-O-Verti. Anchando? Okay. Congratulations. First place, $200 certificate, Matty Levitt, Oakwood. Congratulations. Okay, come over here. You get to get mugged. 54 submissions in the ninth and 10th grade category. Third place, $50 certificate, Tori Burgess, Centennial. Congratulations. Second place, $100 certificate, Beth Dillard, Centennial High School. Congratulations. First place, $200 certificate, Tyler Crump, Centennial. I guess he didn't make it. No, you don't get to stand in. You're too tall, anyone. 11th and 12th grade, 33 submissions. Third place, Gwen Shamley, Centennial High School. Congratulations. Second place, $100 certificate, Xavier Tomlin, Centennial.
(INAUDIBLE) he's on his way to a National Soccer League tournament in North Carolina.
Well, congratulations twice.
(INAUDIBLE).
Thank you. First place, $200 certificate, Jacob Gibson, Centennial. Congratulations. Do you want to show it? If you don't want, just toss it on my desk. It's okay. And now for the biggie. It's a grand prize of $1,500 for a college scholarship, and it goes to Lauren Nay, Sunset Sunrise High School. Congratulations. So, where are you going to go to school?
I'm undecided. I'm still in the process of trying to figure it out.
Should I figure it out?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending tonight. We're going to take like a 15-minute break, so you can leave if you want. You don't have to sit through the rest of this. Or if you want, you can come up here and take more photos. Okay? Thank you. (MUSIC PLAYING) Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight to the 13th Annual Celebrate the U.S. Constitution Contest. The purpose of the Celebrate the Constitution Contest is to promote an understanding of the United States Constitution to school-aged children. Students participate in the contest by submitting posters and essays about the U.S. Constitution. The students with the winning poster or essay will receive a Target gift certificate tonight. For the past several years, the City of Peoria has sponsored the contest with the help of the Peoria Unified School District and Deer Valley Unified School District. In particular, with the support of Public Relations Department of the school districts, this has become a very successful program. I'd like to extend a special thanks to Councilman Edwards, John Edwards, for his assistance in the contest activities and his efforts to engage the youth to participate in local government. Councilman Edwards championed the idea of having youth council liaisons, and today we have two high school seniors that participated in our council meetings. I'd like to introduce our youth council liaisons, Jacob, oops, Jacob and Thomas. These two young men represent the youth of our community and probably future leadership in this city. To all students in the audience, I encourage you to become active in your community. We need your participation. You can serve as a member on the Youth Advisory Committee and maybe someday as a youth council liaison. If you're interested, call the council office for more information, and we can set you up. Okay? Thank you. With that said, we're going to move along to the fun part here. City of Peoria, 13th Annual Celebrate the Constitution Contest winners. Will I announce the name of the winner? If you will come up here in front, we will give you your certificate. Then we'll pose for pictures. I assume the press will want pictures, and so will your parents. Third place kindergarten, for the kindergarten element, third place with just $25 gift certificate goes to Joshua Moore. (APPLAUSE). Howdy. Congratulations. Uncle Sam. Finally, your certificate. I want to apologize in advance if I butcher anybody's names here. Second place is a $50 certificate to Kayla Depew. Congratulations. Uncle Sam. And for first place in the kindergarten category, it's a $100 certificate to Maureen Ingram. Congratulations. Okay. Hold on a second. Maureen, come back over here just for a second, okay? He's going to take your picture. Thank you. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 gift certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate goes to Evelyn Valenzuela Villa. Congratulations. We want to get a picture of you. No, come back over here. I apologize, Evelyn's from Apache Elementary. The third category is third and fourth grade, a total of 33 submissions. Third place, a $50 certificate, Arizu Saber, Cheyenne Elementary. I know I didn't pronounce that right. How do you pronounce your name?
(INAUDIBLE).
Yep, up here. Thank you. Second place is a $100 certificate. It's Ashley Vale from Ira Murphy. Congratulations. Oops. And finishing up the third and fourth grade in category, first place, $200 certificate, Geraldo Valenzuela Villa, Apache Elementary. Oh, you guys knocked them dead. First place, you have to put up with this. Thank you. Next category is fifth and sixth grades. There were 25 total submissions. Third place for the $50 certificate is Christopher Welsh from Coyote Hells on One Elementary. Congratulations. Second place, $100 certificate, Brooklyn Naylor from Apache. Congratulations. First place, $200 certificate, Connor Stewart, Apache. Congratulations. Stand here and get mugged. There are a total of 54 submissions from the seventh and eighth grade category. Third place, $50 certificate, Natalie Van Auerke, Oakwood. Congratulations. No do-overs. Okay. Second place, $100 certificate, Isabel Anchondo. I'm sorry. From Passay-O-Verti. Anchando? Okay. Congratulations. First place, $200 certificate, Matty Levitt, Oakwood. Congratulations. Okay, come over here. You get to get mugged. 54 submissions in the ninth and 10th grade category. Third place, $50 certificate, Tori Burgess, Centennial. Congratulations. The council, would the council members please return? We're going to resume the meeting. Thank you very much. The next item is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda, all items that are listed with a C, they're considered to be routine and been previously reviewed by the council, and they will be enacted by one motion unless someone asks for an item to be removed. Mr. Ames.
Yeah, I'd like to remove 12C.
12C. Any other requests?
I would like to remove 8C.
Eight?
Yeah.
Eight, C. Any other requests? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of 8C and 12C?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ames, second by Mr. Leoni. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. 8C is a grant Arizona Automobile Theft Authority Portable License Plate Re... (INAUDIBLE). Congratulations twice.
(INAUDIBLE).
Thank you. First place, $200 certificate, Jacob Gibson, Centennial. Congratulations. If you don't want, just toss it on my desk. It's okay. And now for the biggie. It's a grand prize of $1,500 for a college scholarship, and it goes to Lauren Nay, Sunset Sunrise High School. Congratulations. So, where are you going to go to school?
I'm undecided. I'm still in the process of trying to figure it out.
Trying to figure it out?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending tonight. We're going to take like a 15-minute break, so you can leave if you want. You don't have to sit through the rest of this. Or if you want, you can come up here and take more photos. Okay? Thank you. (MUSIC PLAYING) Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight to the 13th Annual Celebrate the U.S. Constitution Contest. The purpose of the Celebrate the Constitution Contest is to promote an understanding of the United States Constitution to school-aged children. Students participate in the contest by submitting posters and essays about the U.S. Constitution. The students with the winning poster or essay will receive a Target gift certificate tonight. For the past several years, the City of Peoria has sponsored the contest with the help of the Peoria Unified School District and Deer Valley Unified School District. In particular, with the support of Public Relations Department of the school districts, this has become a very successful program. I'd like to extend a special thanks to Councilman Edwards, John Edwards, for his assistance in the contest activities and his efforts to engage the youth to participate in local government. Councilman Edwards championed the idea of having youth council liaisons, and today we have two high school seniors that participated in our council meetings. I'd like to introduce our youth council liaisons, Jacob, oops, Jacob and Thomas. These two young men represent the youth of our community and probably future leadership in this city. To all students in the audience, I encourage you to become active in your community. We need your participation. You can serve as a member on the Youth Advisory Committee and maybe someday as a youth council liaison. If you're interested, call the council office for more information, and we can set you up. Okay? Thank you. With that said, we're going to move along to the fun part here. City of Peoria, 13th Annual Celebrate the Constitution Contest winners. Will I announce the name of the winner? If you will come up here in front, we will give you your certificate. Then we'll pose for pictures. I assume the press will want pictures, and so will your parents. Third place kindergarten, for the kindergarten element, third place with just $25 gift certificate goes to Joshua Moore. (APPLAUSE). Howdy. Congratulations. Second place, $100 certificate, Xavier Tomlin, Centennial.
(INAUDIBLE). He's a little taller, isn't he?
I know. He's on his way to a National Soccer League Tournament in North Carolina.
Well, congratulations twice.
(INAUDIBLE).
Thank you. First place, $200 certificate, Jacob Gibson, Centennial. Congratulations. Do you want to show it? If you don't want, just toss it on my desk. It's okay. And now for the biggie. It's a grand prize of $1,500 for a college scholarship, and it goes to Lauren Nay, Sunset Sunrise High School. Congratulations. So, where are you going to go to school?
I'm undecided. I'm still in the process of trying to figure it out.
Trying to figure it out?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending tonight. We're going to take like a 15-minute break, so you can leave if you want. You don't have to sit through the rest of this. Or if you want, you can come up here and take more photos. Okay? Thank you. (MUSIC PLAYING) Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight to the 13th Annual Celebrate the U.S. Constitution Contest. The purpose of the Celebrate the Constitution Contest is to promote an understanding of the United States Constitution to school-aged children. Students participate in the contest by submitting posters and essays about the U.S. Constitution. The students with the winning poster or essay will receive a Target gift certificate tonight. For the past several years, the City of Peoria has sponsored the contest with the help of the Peoria Unified School District and Deer Valley Unified School District. In particular, with the support of Public Relations Department of the school districts, this has become a very successful program. I'd like to extend a special thanks to Councilman Edwards, John Edwards, for his assistance in the contest activities and his efforts to engage the youth to participate in local government. Councilman Edwards championed the idea of having youth council liaisons, and today we have two high school seniors that participated in our council meetings. I'd like to introduce our youth council liaisons, Jacob, oops, Jacob and Thomas. These two young men represent the youth of our community and probably future leadership in this city. To all students in the audience, I encourage you to become active in your community. We need your participation. You can serve as a member on the Youth Advisory Committee and maybe someday as a youth council liaison. If you're interested, call the council office for more information, and we can set you up. Okay? Thank you. With that said, we're going to move along to the fun part here. City of Peoria, 13th Annual Celebrate the Constitution Contest winners. Will I announce the name of the winner? If you will come up here in front, we will give you your certificate. Then we'll pose for pictures. I assume the press will want pictures, and so will your parents. Third place kindergarten, for the kindergarten element, third place with just $25 gift certificate goes to Joshua Moore. (APPLAUSE). Howdy. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 gift certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Connor Stewart, Apache. Congratulations. Stand here and get mugged. There are a total of 54 submissions from the seventh and eighth grade category. Third place, $50 certificate, Natalie Van Auerke, Oakwood. Congratulations. No do-overs. Okay. Second place, $100 certificate, Isabel Anchondo. I'm sorry. From Passay-O-Verti. Anchando? Okay. Congratulations. First place, $200 certificate, Matty Levitt, Oakwood. Congratulations. First place, $200 certificate, Matty Levitt, Oakwood. Congratulations. Okay, come over here. You get to get mugged. 54 submissions in the ninth and 10th grade category. Third place, $50 certificate, Tori Burgess, Centennial. Congratulations. The council, would the council members please return? We're going to resume the meeting. Thank you very much. The next item is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda, all items that are listed with a C, they're considered to be routine and have been previously reviewed by the council, and they will be enacted by one motion unless someone asks for an item to be removed. Mr. Ames.
Yeah, I'd like to remove 12C.
12C. Any other requests?
I would like to remove 8C.
Eight?
Yeah.
Eight, C. Any other requests? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of 8C and 12C?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ames, second by Mr. Leoni. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. 8C is a grant Arizona Automobile Theft Authority Portable License Plate Re... (INAUDIBLE). Thank you. Now, for the biggie. It's a grand prize of $1,500 for a college scholarship, and it goes to Lauren Nay, Sunset Sunrise High School. Congratulations. So, where are you going to go to school?
I'm undecided. I'm still in the process of trying to figure it out.
Trying to figure it out?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending tonight. We're going to take like a 15-minute break, so you can leave if you want. You don't have to sit through the rest of this. Or if you want, you can come up here and take more photos. Okay? Thank you. (MUSIC PLAYING) Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight to the 13th Annual Celebrate the U.S. Constitution Contest. The purpose of the Celebrate the Constitution Contest is to promote an understanding of the United States Constitution to school-aged children. Students participate in the contest by submitting posters and essays about the U.S. Constitution. The students with the winning poster or essay will receive a Target gift certificate tonight. For the past several years, the City of Peoria has sponsored the contest with the help of the Peoria Unified School District and Deer Valley Unified School District. In particular, with the support of Public Relations Department of the school districts, this has become a very successful program. I'd like to extend a special thanks to Councilman Edwards, John Edwards, for his assistance in the contest activities and his efforts to engage the youth to participate in local government. Councilman Edwards championed the idea of having youth council liaisons, and today we have two high school seniors that participated in our council meetings. I'd like to introduce our youth council liaisons, Jacob, oops, Jacob and Thomas. These two young men represent the youth of our community and probably future leadership in this city. To all students in the audience, I encourage you to become active in your community. We need your participation. You can serve as a member on the Youth Advisory Committee and maybe someday as a youth council liaison. If you're interested, call the council office for more information, and we can set you up. Okay? Thank you. With that said, we're going to move along to the fun part here. City of Peoria, 13th Annual Celebrate the Constitution Contest winners. Will I announce the name of the winner? If you will come up here in front, we will give you your certificate. Then we'll pose for pictures. I assume the press will want pictures, and so will your parents. Third place kindergarten, for the kindergarten element, third place with just $25 gift certificate goes to Joshua Moore. (APPLAUSE). Howdy. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Connor Stewart, Apache. Congratulations. Stand here and get mugged. There are a total of 54 submissions from the seventh and eighth grade category. Third place, $50 certificate, Tori Burgess, Centennial. Congratulations. The council, would the council members please return? We're going to resume the meeting. Thank you very much. The next item is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda, all items that are listed with a C, they're considered to be routine and have been previously reviewed by the council, and they will be enacted by one motion unless someone asks for an item to be removed. Mr. Ames.
Yeah, I'd like to remove 12C.
12C. Any other requests?
I would like to remove 8C.
Eight?
Yeah.
Eight, C. Any other requests? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of 8C and 12C?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ames, second by Mr. Leoni. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. 8C is a grant Arizona Automobile Theft Authority Portable License Plate Re... (INAUDIBLE). Thank you. Now, for the biggie. It's a grand prize of $1,500 for a college scholarship, and it goes to Lauren Nay, Sunset Sunrise High School. Congratulations. So, where are you going to go to school?
I'm undecided. I'm still in the process of trying to figure it out.
Trying to figure it out?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending tonight. We're going to take like a 15-minute break, so you can leave if you want. You don't have to sit through the rest of this. Or if you want, you can come up here and take more photos. Okay? Thank you. (MUSIC PLAYING) Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight to the 13th Annual Celebrate the U.S. Constitution Contest. The purpose of the Celebrate the Constitution Contest is to promote an understanding of the United States Constitution to school-aged children. Students participate in the contest by submitting posters and essays about the U.S. Constitution. The students with the winning poster or essay will receive a Target gift certificate tonight. For the past several years, the City of Peoria has sponsored the contest with the help of the Peoria Unified School District and Deer Valley Unified School District. In particular, with the support of Public Relations Department of the school districts, this has become a very successful program. I'd like to extend a special thanks to Councilman Edwards, John Edwards, for his assistance in the contest activities and his efforts to engage the youth to participate in local government. Councilman Edwards championed the idea of having youth council liaisons, and today we have two high school seniors that participated in our council meetings. I'd like to introduce our youth council liaisons, Jacob, oops, Jacob and Thomas. These two young men represent the youth of our community and probably future leadership in this city. To all students in the audience, I encourage you to become active in your community. We need your participation. You can serve as a member on the Youth Advisory Committee and maybe someday as a youth council liaison. If you're interested, call the council office for more information, and we can set you up. Okay? Thank you. With that said, we're going to move along to the fun part here. City of Peoria, 13th Annual Celebrate the Constitution Contest winners. Will I announce the name of the winner? If you will come up here in front, we will give you your certificate. Then we'll pose for pictures. I assume the press will want pictures, and so will your parents. Third place kindergarten, for the kindergarten element, third place with just $25 gift certificate goes to Joshua Moore. (APPLAUSE). Howdy. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Tyler Crump, Centennial. I guess he didn't make it. No, you don't get to stand in. You're too tall, anyone. 11th and 12th grade, 33 submissions. Third place, Gwen Shamley, Centennial High School. Congratulations. Second place, $100 certificate, Xavier Tomlin, Centennial.
(INAUDIBLE). He's a little taller, isn't he?
I know. He's on his way to a National Soccer League Tournament in North Carolina.
Well, congratulations twice.
(INAUDIBLE).
Thank you so much.
Thank you. First place, $200 certificate, Jacob Gibson, Centennial. Congratulations. Do you want to show it? If you don't want, just toss it on my desk. It's okay. And now for the biggie. It's a grand prize of $1,500 for a college scholarship, and it goes to Lauren Nay, Sunset Sunrise High School. Congratulations. So, where are you going to go to school?
I'm undecided. I'm still in the process of trying to figure it out.
Trying to figure it out?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending tonight. We're going to take like a 15-minute break, so you can leave if you want. You don't have to sit through the rest of this. Or if you want, you can come up here and take more photos. Okay? Thank you. (MUSIC PLAYING) Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight to the 13th Annual Celebrate the U.S. Constitution Contest. The purpose of the Celebrate the Constitution Contest is to promote an understanding of the United States Constitution to school-aged children. Students participate in the contest by submitting posters and essays about the U.S. Constitution. The students with the winning poster or essay will receive a Target gift certificate tonight. For the past several years, the City of Peoria has sponsored the contest with the help of the Peoria Unified School District and Deer Valley Unified School District. In particular, with the support of Public Relations Department of the school districts, this has become a very successful program. I'd like to extend a special thanks to Councilman Edwards, John Edwards, for his assistance in the contest activities and his efforts to engage the youth to participate in local government. Councilman Edwards championed the idea of having youth council liaisons, and today we have two high school seniors that participated in our council meetings. I'd like to introduce our youth council liaisons, Jacob, oops, Jacob and Thomas. These two young men represent the youth of our community and probably future leadership in this city. To all students in the audience, I encourage you to become active in your community. We need your participation. You can serve as a member on the Youth Advisory Committee and maybe someday as a youth council liaison. If you're interested, call the council office for more information, and we can set you up. Okay? Thank you. With that said, we're going to move along to the fun part here. City of Peoria, 13th Annual Celebrate the Constitution Contest winners. Will I announce the name of the winner? If you will come up here in front, we will give you your certificate. Then we'll pose for pictures. I assume the press will want pictures, and so will your parents. Third place kindergarten, for the kindergarten element, third place with just $25 gift certificate goes to Joshua Moore. (APPLAUSE). Howdy. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Connor Stewart, Apache. Congratulations. Stand here and get mugged. There are a total of 54 submissions from the seventh and eighth grade category. Third place, $50 certificate, Tori Burgess, Centennial. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Connor Stewart, Apache. Congratulations. Stand here and get mugged. There are a total of 54 submissions from the seventh and eighth grade category. Third place, $50 certificate, Tori Burgess, Centennial. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Tyler Crump, Centennial. I guess he didn't make it. No, you don't get to stand in. You're too tall, anyone. 11th and 12th grade, 33 submissions. Third place, Gwen Shamley, Centennial High School. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Tyler Crump, Centennial. I guess he didn't make it. No, you don't get to stand in. You're too tall, anyone. 11th and 12th grade, 33 submissions. Third place, Gwen Shamley, Centennial High School. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Tyler Crump, Centennial. I guess he didn't make it. No, you don't get to stand in. You're too tall, anyone. 11th and 12th grade, 33 submissions. Third place, Gwen Shamley, Centennial High School. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Tyler Crump, Centennial. I guess he didn't make it. No, you don't get to stand in. You're too tall, anyone. 11th and 12th grade, 33 submissions. Third place, Gwen Shamley, Centennial High School. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Tyler Crump, Centennial. I guess he didn't make it. No, you don't get to stand in. You're too tall, anyone. 11th and 12th grade, 33 submissions. Third place, Gwen Shamley, Centennial High School. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Tyler Crump, Centennial. I guess he didn't make it. No, you don't get to stand in. You're too tall, anyone. 11th and 12th grade, 33 submissions. Third place, Gwen Shamley, Centennial High School. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Tyler Crump, Centennial. I guess he didn't make it. No, you don't get to stand in. You're too tall, anyone. 11th and 12th grade, 33 submissions. Third place, Gwen Shamley, Centennial High School. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Tyler Crump, Centennial. I guess he didn't make it. No, you don't get to stand in. You're too tall, anyone. 11th and 12th grade, 33 submissions. Third place, Gwen Shamley, Centennial High School. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Tyler Crump, Centennial. I guess he didn't make it. No, you don't get to stand in. You're too tall, anyone. 11th and 12th grade, 33 submissions. Third place, Gwen Shamley, Centennial High School. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Tyler Crump, Centennial. I guess he didn't make it. No, you don't get to stand in. You're too tall, anyone. 11th and 12th grade, 33 submissions. Third place, Gwen Shamley, Centennial High School. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Tyler Crump, Centennial. I guess he didn't make it. No, you don't get to stand in. You're too tall, anyone. 11th and 12th grade, 33 submissions. Third place, Gwen Shamley, Centennial High School. Congratulations. The next category is first and second grade. There were 18 total submissions. Third place is a $50 certificate to Ethan Dugans. Congratulations. Start over here. Give the certificate. Second place is a $100 gift certificate. It goes to Xavier Gonzalez. Congratulations. And first place is a $200 certificate, Tyler Crump, Centennial. I guess he didn't make it. No, you don't get to stand in. You're too tall, anyone. 11th and 12th grade, 33 submissions.[1121.23]
The council, would the council members please return? We're going to resume the meeting. Thank you very much. The next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda are all items that are listed with a C. They're considered to be routine and have been previously reviewed by the council. And it will be enacted by one motion unless someone asks for an item to be removed. Mr. Ames.
Yeah, I'd like to remove twelve C.
Twelve C. Any other requests?
I would like to remove eight C.
Eight?
Yeah.
Eight C. Any other requests? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of eight C and twelve C?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Mr. Leonie. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Eight C is a grant Arizona Automobile Theft Authority Portable License Plate Reader. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like the Police Department to give a presentation about this device.
Chief Mentor and Deputy Chief Sanders are present to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Swinton. Mayor and Council, the item we have before you is a request to accept a grant from the Arizona Auto Theft Association for a portable license plate reader. You may or may not be aware, the Peoria Police Department has been using license plate readers since 2007. It's been very beneficial for us in assisting us with locating stolen vehicles and also tracking wanted vehicles. Just to give you a little brief overview, the way this technology works is the technology actually reads the license plates and compares that to data in a database and then lets the officers know whether or not that's a vehicle that's actually wanted or maybe stolen. This particular device that we're requesting grant approval for would be a portable unit that we could move to different locations to assist us with monitoring these types of crimes.
I have some questions, Mayor. Chief, how many devices do we have currently in our force?
We currently have three. We have two devices that are stationed in patrol vehicles. We have one stationed on a speed trailer, so this would be the fourth.
Okay. And you deem them to be effective?
Absolutely.
Okay. With that said, the only concern I have is what happens with this information? Once the system scans it, the license plates, does the system keep the license plates that are clean, that are clear?
Yeah, absolutely. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Member, Vice Mayor Rivera, the way our current policy works, and we have what we refer to as a model policy for retaining data from license plate readers, the way it works is divided up into two categories. One is called a hit and the other one is called a non-hit. Hit are responses that we get back that may be related to a crime and may be related to a stolen vehicle. Hit data we retain in our database for a minimum of one year. In the event that something comes up and we need that information to go to court or for prosecution. Non-hit data is information that's just obtained by license plates that are read. That information is only retained in our database for 30 days. At the end of 30 days, it's purged out of our database.
Why do you keep it for 30 days if it's clean?
Well, we keep it for 30 days in the event that something comes up during that 30-day period where we may need to go back and look at that data.
Even if that, if at the initial scan of that license plate, there's nothing wrong, this person does something wrong in the next 30 days, is that what you're, is that why you keep it for 30 days?
Yeah, and the reason why we keep it for 30 days is we may have a situation where we may need to go back to see if there are any vehicles that were in that particular area that were picked up by the license plate scanner that may be related to an incident that we weren't aware of during the first initial period and maybe two, maybe three weeks later that we become aware of that particular incident. We still gather that information in the database for 30 days. Our policy is very strict when you look at policies and you compare them to some other jurisdictions. Some jurisdictions keep their non-hit data for 90 days. We only retain ours for 30 days.
Lastly, what policies do you have in place so that this information is not misused?
We have a department policy that's very strict that was drafted and revised last year. Our policy is in full accordance with a model policy that's already been put together by the International Association of Chiefs of Police.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Ames?
On the non-hit ones, or I guess on really all of them, if you don't identify a hit, you don't match it with the owner, do you? You only do that once you, once you have a hit, is that right? If you match ownership when you have a hit.
Yes, sir, that would be correct. If we have a reason to perform more of an investigation into that matter or why there was a hit, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, could I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Carlet, seconded by the Vice Mayor. This is six C, grant Arizona Automobile Theft Authority Portable License Plate Reader. Please vote. The clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item is twelve C, settlement and release Hudson Insurance Company Scotland Yard Neighborhood Park Performance Bond Claim. Mr. Ames.
Yeah, twelve C refers to a park that we built in a neighborhood south of Grand and east of Ninety- Ninety-First, very nice park. And I was the council member for that district and the park was supposed to be built, but it got delayed by, I think it was over a year, right? And then Mr. Leonie got to be the councilperson. But anyway, I'm curious to know about how we settled this and I think we settled it well. It's unfortunate, we had a contractor who couldn't perform properly and we had to dismiss them and that got into a dispute, but our attorney, Steve Kemp, is going to talk a little bit about that.
Mayor, council, this arose, as Councilman Ames mentioned, out of the construction of the Scotland Yard Park. And with traditional bid contracts, what normally occurs is that the general contractor's performance is guaranteed by a construction bond. And a construction bond is usually issued by a bonding company to ensure that contractor's successful completion of the project. In this case, in the midst of the construction, for a whole number of reasons, the city needed to issue a notice of default and defaulted to contractor. Now, what the city's remedy under the construction law is, before it could proceed with any kind of litigation, it must file a claim against the contractor's bond, which the city did here. And in fact, subsequently, this company had other projects, which they were also having claims filed against their bond, which is not unusual, that I can tell you happens in the construction business. That's not a typical circumstance. The bonding companies, obviously from their standpoint, when they pay on that bond, they're paying out of their proceeds. So the bonding companies are very, very judicious about paying on that bond. We went into extensive negotiations with the bonding company. The bonding company's initial position was that they felt that there were actually costs that the city owed the general contractor and that the city needed to pay additional money. We obviously took a much different opinion and I am pleased to report, after roughly some seven months of negotiation, that I have an agreement, assuming council approval for me to sign, that the city will receive $240,000 from the bonding company. I can tell you, in my years of public practice, this is one of the most successful outcomes I've ever been involved with, with a construction bonding firm. And in that sense, really the recognition, there are four staff members in the city who really deserve recognition for all of this because without their fine work, I don't think we would have accomplished that. And that would be Andy Granger, the City Engineer, Ed Strifler on Construction Management, Dan Zanko in Materials Management, and then Cheryl Boswell, the Deputy City Attorney in my office. The four of them working as a team, we repeatedly went back and forth with this bonding company over and over and over again to, starting from them wanting us to pay, to them wanting to pay very small amounts, to where we ended up, which is this proposed agreement to settle this matter with the bonding company paying the city $240,000. The total additional cost was roughly about $279,000, so there's a slight difference in cost the city's going to incur. But this is really an example of outstanding teamwork by your staff that has led to, I would tell you, is one of the most successful results I have ever seen in my years in public practice in dealing with a bonding company. And I certainly recommend that the city accept and authorize me to execute the proposed settlement.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Yeah. So this is $240,000 that comes back to citizens that would have been lost if we wouldn't have pursued to have this repayment from the company that failed to perform.
This is repayment by the bonding company.
Through their bonding, through their bonding.
On behalf of the general contractor who did not properly perform the work.
Very good.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Ames, seconded by Ms. Carlet. This is twelve C, settlement and release Hudson Insurance Company Scotland Yard Neighborhood Park Performance Bond Claim. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Regular agenda, new business 20 R, Palm Canyon Planned Area Development Amendment, static billboards.
Yes, Chris Hockes, our Plan Community Development Director, will give a brief presentation on this. This, of course, was the item that you also discussed in your study session this evening.
Great. Thank you, Carl. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Carl mentioned, this is the information that we presented at the study session on the Becker Board's static billboard proposal. We've provided a resolution in your packet. Should you be inclined to support opposing the request, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments?
Thank you, Chris. Can you kind of explain the process that's going on right now and what the next steps are for that process?
Absolutely, Mayor and Council.
And the city of Peoria?
Absolutely. There's been a, the Palm Canyon site is a site located at the northwest corner of Loop 101 and Bell Road in the city of Glendale. So there's a case that's been filed by Rose Law Group on behalf of Becker Boards. They are requesting to amend the underlying zoning to permit two 85-foot-tall static billboards, non-digital billboards. And this request has generated quite a bit of, quite a bit of concern, not only from Peoria residents, but Glendale residents alike. So this proposal, being a zoning amendment, is running through the process right now. Last month, the Glendale Planning and Zoning Commission had a work session where they did not take public comment, but just to ask questions of staff. The next step in the process is that this, there will be a full public hearing on December 5th with the Glendale Planning and Zoning Commission at 6:00 PM to take all testimony. And then after that, after they make a recommendation, the item would move on to the City Council, although there's no date set, that is projected to be sometime early 2014.
And when is that meeting coming up for the Glendale zoning?
Yes, sir. That would be Thursday, December 5th, 6:00 PM in the Glendale Council Chambers.
Okay. I personally would like to move this forward. I'm in support of this resolution. I've talked to a lot of the constituents in my district that are affected the most and they're not supportive of the static billboards. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions? Ms. Carlet?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. Glendale has a, has a good ordinance in place and right now they are choosing to possibly amend that ordinance and this is going to affect Peoria. I mean, they're our neighbor and this is right on the border of Glendale and Peoria, on their land, no doubt. And, and you know, this isn't really a statement about whether we, about private property rights or about billboards, it's about quality of life. And these, these billboards are going to impact the quality of life of the neighborhoods directly next to these billboards and they are very, very close. And so the city of Peoria right now is looking for a way to help preserve the quality of life of our neighborhoods, as if, you know, there is, there is someone who is coming in and trying on purpose to take away that quality and diminish it and diminish their property values and diminish their, their views out their window. It's not necessary. It's not something that has to happen. That land was originally zoned for an office park. It's right there on the freeway. It would be great for some kind of commerce there. But to put billboards up is going to be an eyesore in a lot of ways. You know, billboards have a place, they have, you know, they're good for commerce in a lot of ways, but this is not the place. It's not the place when you can look out your bedroom window or your living room window and that's all you can see. And it really affects Peoria residents. So we need to take care of our own and we need to make sure if there are people who live in those adjacent neighborhoods or even people who care about their quality of life at some point can come to this meeting in Glendale and express your viewpoint, it will make a big difference. Your voice needs to be heard, so I encourage anyone who's watching this to come to that meeting in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ames?
Yes, I'm opposed to signs in this location. I know there may be other locations in a very urban kind of setting, maybe along the 101, but these are billboards that are going to glare right, right into the homes of people, either the back or front of them. And this is not what we want. And this land is land that Peoria owned at one time and we DN X'd it because this developer wanted to do office buildings there and it would have been easier to get water and sewer from Glendale. I didn't support DN X'ation, but the majority of the council did. And the, you know, it wasn't anything stipulated specifically, but there was no, but the zoning of the land did not allow any billboard, so they're coming back later and they want to do this. And this is something like, you know, in, pushing it in the faces of some people, particularly our citizens in Peoria and citizens in Glendale who oppose this as well. So this is not the place for billboards. It's a very high billboard, it's like 10 stories high, is that correct? He said, yeah, or eight stories? Eight stories.
Eighty-five feet to about eight, eight stories or so?
Eight stories high, so very high, you know, it's high as some airplanes come down, I guess. So this is not what we want, so I do support this resolution.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Chris, I had one more question for you. This doesn't even meet their standards, is that correct? For the placement, as far as the placement between where they want to be and where the residents, as far as the distance, is that correct?
Mayor and Counselor, Counselor Edwards. So the, the city of Glendale enacted a digital billboard ordinance last year, which restricted billboard placements between Camelback and Northern in their entertainment district. That applies to digital billboards. However, I've argued that this, all being a, although a static billboard placement is of a size and height and bulk and function, meaning it is intended to convey messages off-site, should be reviewed in the same realm as that digital billboard ordinance. So in that context, you're right, it does not meet many of those standards, including separation, you know, minimum separation from residential zoning districts.
Thank you. I have one comment on this, too. I would urge people to go to the meeting in Glendale and express your opinion about 85 feet of ugly that they want to put on Bell and 101. It's ridiculous. Those that don't live in the area, you figure it's not going to cost you anything? You're wrong. You're going to have to drive past that crap. So I would strongly recommend that we fight this. With that, could I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Ms. Carlet. Yes. The resolutions. Yes, the resolution calls for us to oppose the Becker Boards, that we're in opposition to the, a vote yes is that we're opposing it. Okay? Everybody clear on that? Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next is 21 R, public hearing liquor license, Grand Pizza, 8996 West Union Hill Road, Suite 105. This is a new liquor license, series 12, for that operation. And a second, and a location transfer for an onsite beer and wine liquor license, series seven, for Grande Pizza at 8996 West Union Hill, Union Hills Road. Staff report.
Brent Mattingly has a brief staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Properties were posted in accordance with Arizona statutes. All reviewing departments recommend approval. All fees were paid and no comments were received from the public.
Thank you. Now open the public hearing. This is a public hearing for the liquor license for Grande Pizza. Would anyone in the audience care to comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Council, discussion or a motion? Moved by Mr. Leonie, seconded by Mr. Ames.
Yes.
This is, again, this is liquor license, Grande Pizza, 8996 West Union Hills Road, Suite 105. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item up is 22 R, public hearing, Old Town Specific Area Plan Amendment, Land Use Map, Grand, 88th Drive and Grand Avenue.
Chris Hockes is back to make a presentation on this one.
Try that again. I'd like to present items 23 R and, or excuse me, 22 R and 23 R together as they are related and in the end, ask the council to take two separate actions. On this case, the applicant is Earl Curling, the guard. They are acting on behalf of Madamy Homes. We have two applications before us. One, we have a minor general plan amendment, a request to redesignate about 17.9 acres from Old Town Medium High Density Residential to Old Town Medium Density Residential. And then item 23 R is the corresponding rezone request to rezone the property from its current zoning of essentially multi-family planned area development back to a single-family planned area development.
planetary development back to a single-family planetary development. This would change the current zoning, which permits up to 288 condominium units, back to eighty-six single-family homes, which would then be consistent with the recorded final plat that's on the property. Contextually, the vacant site is an infill site. It's located at the southwest corner of 88th Drive and Grand Avenue. Grand Avenue, of course, is an ADOT-controlled, six-lane limited access arterial. The site is approximately half mile to a mile from the Old Town core. And when, when looking at the land uses around it, it's a vacant site. It's immediately due east to the Ramada Inn, and sandwiched between the Ramada Inn and a commercial center east of 88th Drive. I should say rather north of the, or rather south of the site. It abuts a existing single-family residential subdivision called Crystal Cove. This is zoned R16, six thousand square foot lots. This is a development that was plotted and developed in the mid-1990s. And then across Grand Avenue and the railroad tracks is an existing elementary school and other residential neighborhoods. The graphic to the left, that illustrates the existing general plan designation, and the zoning, existing zoning is to the right. The history on the site is this. Prior to 2009, the site was zoned for single-family resident development, which then at that time enabled the approval and recordation of the final plat for eighty-six single-family units. In 2009, the zoning was amended to a PAD to reflect a new proposal for 288 condominium units. At that time, you might recall, we were, we were looking at the Old Town specific plan. We were developing it. And that plan was modified accordingly to reflect that new entitlement. So that designation then changed to medium-high density residential, roughly eighteen to twenty-five units per acre. Subsequently, the ADOT Grand Avenue access constraints, they learned, would not permit direct access from Grand Avenue. So as a result, direct access would have to recur from 88th Drive. So from an access standpoint, this restriction was seen as problematic for a multifamily or commercial use. So the, now we have the developer in to request that it be moved back to its actual final plat recorded for single-family. So the existing zoning on the site, you'll see, is also reflective of what its current zoning today is, and that's for condominium units. When looking at the zoning in the general area, it's consistent with the existing land use, whereas you have commercial zoning to the west and east, as you would expect. You have R16, six thousand square foot homes to the south and to the north. It's zoned RM1, which is a, which is a multifamily zoning, however, that developed as, as single-family units. This is the conceptual development plan. Again, it's eighty-six detached single-family lots for a corresponding gross density of four point eight units per acre. The minimum lot size would be four thousand seven hundred and twenty-five square feet. That's the smallest lot size that's shown on the, on the final plat. Lots are generally in that size. However, they do range. There are a few larger lots, up to the largest one being fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-four, and you'll find that in the corners, the northwest corner of the site. Some of the plan entries, again, as I mentioned, one direct access point that would occur from 88th Drive to the southeast. There was no opportunities for secondary fire access, because you've got an existing neighborhood to the south and, and existing commercial uses to the west. So with that, the fire code requires, if you can't have a secondary access, that you have to fire sprinkler all, all the lots. So that would be the condition there. And then with respect to some of the plat items, the southern edge, when we had a neighborhood meeting, and I'll discuss that in a minute, there were some concerns about the, the height limit of some of the homes. The developer has agreed to restrict all the homes along the southern boundary to one story. Okay, with the plan to develop according to existing final plat, developers seeking to amend the general plan, as I mentioned, from residential high to residential medium, this designation provides a transition from lower-density single-family, and may be in the form of small-lot, single-family, or other housing types such as townhouses, duplex. So with the change, staff believes the proposal provides an appropriate edge and transition from the existing single-family neighborhood to the south up to the highly-controlled and, highly-traveled, rather, Grand Avenue corridor. So while still, this does provide an opportunity to enlarge the population base in the area, and it fills a, an opportunity for vacant infill property in Old Town. As you know, with our rezoning and general plan process, we do require a, a series of neighborhood meetings. We do provide notification to at least a six-hundred-foot radius and HOAs within a mile. There was a neighborhood meeting held on September 18. There were three attendees from the neighborhood to the south. Some of the input from that neighborhood meeting were one wall height. And if you recall the site, there is a grade differential. The site is a little higher than the, the neighborhood to the south, so there, there was concerns about the wall height. So the developer, and you'll see this reflected in your ordinance, has agreed to a stipulation that they would work with the existing neighbors to either raise the height of that existing wall to provide that privacy, or if all the neighbors were not agreeable to a, to a wall height raise, then they would construct a wall adjacent to it with no more than a four-inch separation, so that they could provide that privacy. And then the second thing, as I mentioned, too, was the story homes and the stipulation to restrict homes on the southern boundary. This item went to the planning commission on October 17th, and at that time, there were, there were no speakers in support or opposition. And accordingly, with the findings in the staff report, we are recommending approval of both items, and, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Questions? No questions?
Yeah. Press my button.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, this is basically going back to the original zoning that we approved, right? And I, I think this is a better fit for the area, so obviously, I'm going to support it. And I could see my home in, in the map there, up just north of Cactus.
Other questions or comments? Go right ahead, Ms. Carlet.
Does 88th Drive go through to south? 88th Drive, does that go through to the south?
Counselor Carlet, it does, yes.
And so, since it goes through to the south and then would come out on Yucca, that is one entrance, and then the access onto Grand? Do they have access onto Grand at all?
Counselor Carlet, there's a median in the middle of Grand, so from 88th Drive, they would have, they could only turn right.
Okay, but they do have right out?
Correct.
So it seems to me that they have two access points.
Well, if, if you consider from the site directly, 88th Drive, ADOT was not amenable to an access point off of Grand Avenue, directly off of Grand Avenue from the site. But I, I see what you're saying. You're saying from the corner of the site to Grand Avenue.
Right. So I'm saying we're, we're requiring them to be sprinkled, but it sounds, it seems to me like there are two ways to get in and out of this community.
Counselor Carlet, the, the fire code, they have some nuances within their code. They require the access points to be separated a certain distance. And so if it's not, doesn't meet that difference, distance, then they have to fire sprinkler them.
Nuance.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
If I remember right, the, the right-in, right-out question is what killed a previous applicant at one point, or a potential developer at one point with this property.
Correct, not having direct access. Yeah, they did not find the intended use to be viable without that direct access.
Right, right. But this developer's happy. Mr. Leone?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, actually, this is now, is in my district. You can only get out on 88th Avenue. You can't get out for Grand. Is that correct?
Counselor Leone, from 88th Drive, you can access Grand Avenue, but you can, you can only turn right.
So there's only one way in and one way out, and that's on 88th Avenue?
Correct.
That's why I'll make sure. Okay, I just want to say that I'm glad that, that we decided to put homes in there. When I talked to Michael Curry about it, it was great, because I used to get a lot of calls that they were making a landfill out of it, until they put a fence up. But now, they're gonna put homes in there, so the people who's throwing junk in there won't be able to do it anymore. So I'm glad that we're building those homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ames.
Yeah, it is a right-out, but then you go down like a, maybe it's a block or three-quarters of a block, and then you can get into a queue to turn left and kind of circle back. And I, I drive around this area a lot, and it's, it's not a problem at all. So it's just a little different way to turn left.
Other questions or comments? We have no speaker request forms. Okay, we will deal with these one at a time. The first one is 22R, Old Town specific area plan amendment, land use map, Grand Manor, 88th Drive and Grand Avenue. Please vote. Clerk, oh, I'm sorry, could I have a motion?
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. Carlet, seconded by Mr. Leone. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Second is 23R, major planned area development amendment, 88th Drive and Grand Avenue. Oh, I'm sorry, public hearing. Open a public hearing? I've done that before. Anyone care to address this issue? Seeing that, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Now, could I have a motion?
So.
Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Mr. Leone. This is major planned area development amendment, 88th Drive and Grand Avenue. Please vote. Clerk will record the votes. It is unanimous. Question for the city attorney? I did not open and close the public hearing on the PAD. Should I go back and do that?
All right, yes, Mayor. You, you could close the public hearing right now, even though you voted. I would just recommend that you close the public hearing right now.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. I guess we're done with that one. Next is 24R, public hearing, rezoning 107th Avenue and Happy Valley Parkway.
And Chris is up on this one also.
Mayor and Counsel, item 24R, this is a proposal submitted on behalf of Lennar Homes to amend a portion of the Tierra del Rio planned community to facilitate a hundred and seventy lot, single-family residential development. The proposal would affect three parcels at the, representing seventy-one acres at the southwest and southeast corner of 107th Avenue and Happy Valley. This would effectively rezone three parcels that are zoned on the Tierra del Rio master plan from commercial to residential. Now, just taking a step back on the, there, it worked, good. On the Tierra del Rio master plan, as you might recall, this was a master plan that was entitled or zoned in Maricopa County back in 2002. It was subsequently annexed into the city in 2005, and we provided it with our equivalent zoning of planetary development. You might recall back in 2002, when this was entitled in the county, Happy Valley road alignment was intended to serve as the interim Loop 303. And so that was the original land use planning that occurred that was built around commercial at the subject site with that in mind. Subsequently, of course, the alignment shifted north away from Tierra del Rio to its current location. So Happy Valley, in this context, became a six-lane limited access arterial, providing major east-west access. As I mentioned, the site is comprised of three parcels. Parcels two, and, parcel two is a southeast corner. Parcel three A is a southwest corner. And then parcel three B, which is that, south of the parcel three, it's that little strip, that's actually not proposed for development, but is part of this rezone application. All in all, the affected area in the rezone application comprises seventy-one point two gross acres. Contextually, parcel two, which is a southeast corner, this is a little higher in grade than parcel three, as the landslide slips westerly to the Aguafreya floodplain, which you can kind of see at the upper part of the map on the west, west side, Aguafreya floodplain. 107th Avenue and Happy Valley, this is a signalized intersection. 107th is an arterial roadway that provides north-south access primarily to residential areas. The site, contextually, is about, about a quarter mile west of the major commercial center at, at Happy Valley and Lake Pleasant Parkway. As you know, this area contains about 1.3 million square feet of commercial space. On the map, the, you can see the city boundaries. The city boundaries are reflected in, I guess, kind of that brown, red color. Directly to the south of parcel two, in TDR, is zoned in Maricopa County for one-acre lots. Located to the west, in Tierra del Rio is parcel four A, it's zoned R16 effectively. And parcels to the south, in Tierra del Rio are also zoned R16 in that master plan. This is the conceptual development plan that Lennar Homes is proposing. Again, a hundred and seventy detached lots on sixty point nine acres. Again, that's because the, the southern, southern ten acres is not part of the development proposal. It is part of the rezone proposal. The minimum lot size for parcel three, the southwest corner, is six thousand three hundred and twenty-five square feet. Parcel two, which is the southeast corner, that's slightly larger at seventy-three hundred square feet. The development plan, as you can see, includes a much more expansive landscape buffer than is realized or that we, that we have on the north side of it, particularly on the southwest corner of the parcel. And that's predominantly because we have a, with some of the historic flows, it's required to have a drainage basin, so that, that results in an eighty-foot landscape buffer along that area. So the plan will include not only localized open space, meeting our design review requirements within the development. It'll also include not only that expanded landscape buffer that I talked about, but also an eight-foot multi-use path along the southern side of that, of that site. Access in this proposal, it's restricted to 107th Avenue. It would occur at that point. There is no access onto Happy Valley, being a limited access parkway. Parcel three A, again, which is the westerly parcel, it will have emergency access through Tierra del Rio to parcel four, which is to the west. With regard to parcel two, the other side, there is no opportunity for access either to the east or south. To the south, we have a wash, and there's also one-acre lot. So in that regard, like the last case, they would be required to be fired, fire sprinkled. The graphic on the left, this is the general plan land use map, and, and we've identified the parcels on the map. The parcels are currently designated low-density residential with, has a density range of two to five units per acre, and a corresponding target density of three units per acre. So when you look at each parcel, I've tried to identify the, the actual density that each development would, would encompass. On the southeast corner, it would realize a density of two point seven units per acre, so it's within that range and, and near that target. On the southwest corner, two point nine units per acre. So again, similar situation. It's within that range. The graphic on the right illustrates the existing zoning of the site. So if we look at it contextually, as I mentioned, the parcels are currently zoned commercial in the PAD. But if you look at some of the parcels south and west of TDR, they have R16 zoning. And again, we're talking about lots in the sixty-three hundred and seventy-three hundred square foot range, so they, they are compatible with what's south and west of, of the site. Here are some of the key considerations that we use to analyze the proposal. Again, as I mentioned, the density, the overall density of two point eight units per acre, it falls within the residential low land use range, provides a lot size and a character that's compatible with adjacent developed parcels, and it provides additional rooftops to support existing commercial centers in the area. However, notwithstanding that, you know, staff was, was very sensitive to the, the prospect of losing commercial, acres within our commercial inventory in the city. So what we asked the applicant to do was to prepare a market study, a, a economic and market study. So the applicant retained the services of Elliott Pollak Company to perform the study, and the study is identi, is, is an exhibit within your packet. In short, the study concluded that parcels two and three were not viable commercial parcels. I'll try to summarize some of those key conclusions here. Number one, the site has no direct access from Happy Valley, and, and it could only be access from 107th, which has a raised median. So this, in their eyes, affects the viability of the parcels to develop for commercial uses on the site. The second item, I mentioned that the Aguafreya floodplain is very close to the west. If you imagine trying to draw a, a trade area around the commercial acreage, the, the incidents of the Aguafreya floodplain being there was seen as a hindrance, because it does not allow for a full customer base to be drawn around, around the commercial sites. Can't take advantage of that. And then the third assertion was that there is already an abundance of not only significant commercial space yet to be absorbed at the Happy Valley, Lake Pleasant corridor, or corner, rather, but also other sites in the immediate area that are either zoned or designated on the general plan for commercial use. So it was seen as an abundance of opportunities in the area. So as we look at this, we recognize it's important to have the right balance of commercial uses, and especially what, wherein we don't have a situation where one site might cannibalize from another site, another commercial site. And it's important to have a healthy supply of rooftops to support it. So we want to avoid scenarios where we have perhaps an overbuilt commercial areas, which, as you know, could lead to scenarios where we have empty storefronts or uses that some might deem as, as marginal. So we were in support of this proposal. So again, as I mentioned in the last application, we do have a process, a public process in mind, six-hundred-foot radius. There was a neighborhood meeting held on June 12th at Park Ridge Elementary School. There were only four attendees there at the meeting. They were all from the, if you recall, the one-acre lot area in the county. They were from those areas. The, they were actually in support of the use going to residential. They did not support commercial uses there. I would characterize the questions they had not as concerns, but more of inquiries or questions. They asked about what kinds of improvements might be along Happy Valley Parkway. They asked about would overhead utilities be undergrounded. And so we do have, of course, have an infrastructure policy that if you have anything under sixty-nine KB, has to be undergrounded. So we already have measures to address that. And they also asked about lot size and layout and building height. This item did go to the planning commission, October 17th, 2013. There were no speakers in support or opposition of that case. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to support the application. And, subject to the findings in your staff report, staff is recommending that we, that we rezone and support the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation as follows on the screen, subject to conditions one through eleven. Subject to conditions 1 through 11. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, first of all, I'm going to open a public hearing. This is a public hearing on a rezoning 107th Avenue and Happy Valley Parkway. Would anyone in the audience care to address this application?
Mr. Mayor, my address is 3101 North Central. I think Chris covered it very thoroughly. I just wanted to just emphasize that before we processed the zoning case, staff, I think correctly, wanted us to go through the analysis, because eliminating 70 acres of commercial is something that shouldn't be taken lightly. And so we basically put the brakes on the zoning case and went through a study for about four or five months, in which we really analyzed how much zoning, how much zone property you had along Lake Pleasant Parkway and the 303 corridor, both of which, I think most people would agree, are better corridors for commercial or office than is the Happy Valley corridor because of the access constraints. And because of some of the demographic issues that Chris talked about, there not being demographics really to the south and to the west. And so we went through that study, and basically, as Chris has indicated, concluded there's more than ample amount along Lake Pleasant corridor. I think we discovered that there's about 230 acres of developed property along Lake Pleasant, and there's about 1,300 acres that are zoned. And correspondingly, along the 303 corridor for a five-mile stretch going north and south, I think there's about 2,500 acres of zoned property, only 41 acres are developed. So I think from an inventory standpoint, there's no question, the city has very well served in terms of having available areas. But I just wanted, again, to point out that staff was very concerned about that and made us go through the steps. I think at the end of that, it was a worthwhile exercise. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions? Go ahead.
Chris, or Mike, can you go back to the slide that shows the parcel B, 3B? That's good. So the entrance, so that we have no plans, there's no plans for development on that particular parcel at this time, is that correct?
Counselor Edwards, that's correct.
So if it stays like it is, how would those residents get in and out? They would have to come down 107th, and they would only have one way. They'd have to come south on 107th to get in, and they'd have to exit the property to the south, and have to go how far down to do a U-turn to come back up to Happy Valley?
Counselor Edwards, for clarification, are you speaking on parcel 3B?
That's correct.
Okay, so they would have to have their own access onto 107th. There's a minimum distance that they would have to meet from the existing access, I think it's 150 feet or so.
Would that cause some traffic concerns later on, when you've got traffic coming in and out of 3A and also out of 3B?
I think those traffic concerns would have to be addressed through the... We would require a traffic impact analysis to address that and any turning restrictions.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Oh, wait, a closed public hearing? I'm just not getting it done tonight. Questions or comments? Ms. Carla.
Yes, I do want to make a comment, because I was one of the people who, at first, you know, did a double-take when we were going to rezone something from commercial to residential. And then I realized that Lake Pleasant Parkway is a parkway, and that means that we don't need a whole lot of commercial in a whole lot of different areas sporadically, you know, thrown about on the parkway. That's not what a parkway is. So if you look at the picture, it's in this... No, no, back where you were. You know, that nice little sidewalk and the trees and those kinds of things. Chris, go back. There, right there, right there. That's kind of... I mean, obviously, that's something on the interior of this development, but when we think about a parkway, we think about setbacks that are far from the road, we think about varying elevations and landscaping and, you know, maintaining the look of our desert and those kinds of things. So as long as the developer is committed to maintaining the look of a parkway, and we are committed to having that parkway extend all the way from Vestancia Boulevard to 67th Avenue, I think that we are preserving something really of value for our city, and that we should continue along these lines for all of that stretch. And in actuality, this is the only thing that was zoned commercial, the 72 acres along that area. So I think this is a positive change for us and something that we can really commit to doing well. Thanks.
Thank you. No other requests to speak? Could I have... This is 24R, rezoning 107th Avenue and Happy Valley Parkway. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Ms. Carla. Please vote. Clerk will record your vote. It is unanimous, very much. Next item is 25R, grant Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority, fiscal year 2014.
John Sefton, our Community Services Director, will make a brief presentation on this item.
Why, thank you, Mr. Swenson, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This microphone sounds very booming tonight. Have we made some adjustments? All right, well, good evening, and at the core of tonight's agenda item is the youth and amateur youth sports field lighting. Through the 2014 budget cycle, you'll recall that we had extensive discussion and ultimately allocated funding in the Community Works Program for us to address the recreational needs of our citizens, and specifically, those citizens in northern Peoria. At that time, staff was directed to explore opportunities for ball field lighting in the northern sections of Peoria. Subsequently, staff executed research, conducted a public engagement process, and applied for additional funding through the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority. In brief, Arizona state law authorizes the authority, sports authority, to provide funding for the construction and improvement of facilities that benefit youth and amateur sports. One way that the ASTA accomplishes the effort is through competitive biennial grant funding program. And tonight, I'd like to announce that Peoria has been selected to receive $127.08 for lighting a project at the PUSD New School, Sunset Heights School. So for your consideration tonight is the actual primary action of entering into the agreement with the Sports and Tourism Authority and the associated budget amendments. By doing so, you, in essence, will endorse or approve the concept of partnering with PUSD on the lighting of the ball fields at the new school. So I do want to not escape tonight without providing a map of Peoria, and take a quick look at what our current lighting is for our ball field amenities. As we zoom in a little bit, this slide shows Cheyenne Elementary, Coyote Hills Elementary, Sunrise Mountain High School, all of which we have IGAs with the school district for the lighting use, and ultimately, the installation as well. This depicts as well, at the circled areas, the Murphy Park, which is a city park, neighborhood park, and the Varney Park, which is a neighborhood park, as well as the starred locations, which represent our community parks, Rio Vista and Pioneer. So with that, I want to move on to what we actually did this past summer. We really reached out to the public on June 10th with a posting on our website and a direct mail of 2,800 notices. That letter is in your materials. I don't expect you to read off of this little screen, but as an example, it describes the intent of the study, the study areas, it announces the public meeting dates, and provides a web address for an online survey, as well as a direct email address to voice public support or concerns. Your packet does contain all of those that we did receive through the online submissions as well. So we went from the letter to the next meeting. This was to highlight the Vestancia area. 1,500 notices were mailed, again, provided public meeting details, online and email connection opportunities, and we made it very important. Camino Alago, we did the same element there, and I just lost that off the screen. To announce the Camino Alago, at the August 15th meeting of the Parks and Recreation Board, they requested that staff complete a second mailing and a third public meeting. An additional 2,275 notices were mailed out to the quarter-mile radius of the Sunrise Mountain Library, using that as the center, which is where the new school is going. So, hey, there's the important tab. So as an outreach, here's a summary of what we did. We gave the direct mailer first week of June, held the public meeting June 20th at Park Ridge Elementary, had about 15 public members there. The week of July 8th, we mailed out the notice, the postcard, had about 70 people show up to the Vestancia Elementary School, and about 25 people showed up at the Parks and Recreation Board meeting on August 15th. There was concern that there was not enough notice or enough public involvement from the Parks and Recreation Board, so staff then went again out the week of August, actually it was 20th, to notify the September 25th meeting. And tonight, I do want to recognize our Parks and Recreation Board members, they had four different public meetings to address the lighting issue in northern Peoria. And with us tonight, Chairman Bill Collette, Vice Chair Brian Derrick, and Rich Ward are hanging out in the back. And as well, I do want to recognize that with that many people that came out, the public engagement was great. Want to recognize that not everybody's in favor, not everybody's in support, but there was definitely a lot of support through the different methods of communication through the process. So with that, I do want to roll right into an update on Camino Alago Park. This has been a design process, again, more public involvement in designing the park. The first public meeting was held way back in February of 2012. A follow-up meeting was held in April of 2012. There was a preferred concept plan that was put into motion. However, in the fall of 2012, is when we learned that the school district, which is the copy portion of this graphic, had planned to move forward with the design and build of the school number 33. So at that point, staff kind of put the brakes on the plan for Camino Alago to ensure that our efforts were in good concert with those two very public spaces, and recognizing our success in the past with the joint use of facilities and our partnering with the school district to provide great neighborhood access, community access for those recreational amenities. So that did cause a bit of a delay. This was the original plan, sort of ended, the parking lot is the big oval shape at the top, did not take into consideration at all the relationship to the school. The new plan adds additional parking to address any other concerns for the park planning. We really recognize that the library, as busy as it is, this site adds approximately just shy of 80 additional spaces to what's there currently, changes the location of the tennis and the basketball court so that we can maximize that parking amenity, does remove our originally planned sand volleyball court, and then it does add the lighting, and it does depict here the sports fields that are actually on the school property. It also creates an entry crossway, and so that there's more sort of a plaza area at that ball field amenity, and has also all of our... Here's a little closer look. All of our general recreation amenities that are included in our traditional neighborhood parks, including playgrounds, restrooms, court sports, open play areas, and unique attractions. So with that, I want to express my appreciation for Tammy Shreve and her work on doing the grant application, as well as recognize Kirk Haynes for his efforts in the park planning process and the public process. They're both here tonight to help with any questions, as well as our Parks and Recreation Board members. With that, turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We have one request to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Shelby Duplessis. I live in Vestancia. I don't know if I need to give my home address, or... Okay. Basically, we've attended several of the public meetings for the lights. Our son is here with me. He plays both Little League at Sidewinder and a club team. His preference is to play baseball year-round instead of other sports. So that's what we do. I'm sad to say, though, October, November, well, actually, September, October, and November, when we overlap with Little League, and then again, this coming February, March, April, May, we actually have to leave Peoria and go to North Scottsdale, Phoenix, and then South Phoenix sometimes even to get fields at night. During school, obviously, and people that work, it's too hard to get to a field until 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, and for safety, we need the lights. In the summer, it's so warm, it's easier to play at night. And so I would much prefer to keep our dollars in Peoria at the same time we've chosen to live, work, and play in Peoria. And so we don't want to continue to leave the city because there's not enough fields to be able to do that. I think this is a great opportunity to have a grant to be able to put those lights up and to be able to keep the kids active and off of the X-boxes and off of mischievous activity, and just to keep them involved. I think that playing baseball teaches them a lot of different skills, including respect and following their coach, and good influence where they have to keep their grades up and behave at home. And so we see a lot of kids that can't play, because the Little League and Sidewinder, where we're at, has to cap the number of kids that can play, and the club teams need to go play for other cities, because there's just not enough lighted fields. So I commend the city of Peoria for the new Pioneer Park. We're excited in January. I know that we've had the grand opening in October, but because of the turf, we're trying to not use that except for tournaments. So we're looking forward to being able to rent fields at that location soon. I personally am in charge of scheduling all of the fields, and so I call Mark Brust every Monday morning and request fields. And he's busy, we're busy, and there's just not enough fields to go around. So we have to call every Monday to reserve the next two fields, because we can only hold four fields at a time, to keep it fair. And so it's just something that I hope that we can find the location. I was in support of the Vestancia location and understand why that didn't work, but continue to support wherever we can find a field for lights to let the boys keep playing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions and comments from the councilor? Ms. Ames?
Yes, you showed a lot of parks here, is lighting going to go in all of those that were in your presentation? Or was that last one separate?
Those three different plans were one park. It just was used to demonstrate the changes from the original sketch to the current sketch that represents the school, incorporating the ball field lights, which is the action for tonight.
Okay.
One park.
Mr. Patani?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank John and his staff for doing your due diligence in going out and talking to the citizens, having four public hearings, sending out over 6,852 public notices to make sure that everybody was informed. I'd also like to thank the Parks and Rec Board for listening to the citizens, hearing the positives and the negatives, and deciding that this is something that they wanted to do in support lighting Camino Alago. So I think that if you live in Peoria, you should be able to play in Peoria, and for all those reasons, I'll be supporting this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carla.
Yes, I want to echo that. I thought the Parks and Rec Board did such a great job. I mean, this is a controversial situation, because people who live right next to them might not be aware of all of the things that you can do to mitigate some of the light. Maybe they don't understand about the timing and things like the timers and things like that. It's not like the old days, when you've got these big, huge, you know, bulbs shining down in your home. It's a little bit nicer than that. But anyway, the Parks and Rec Board listened to all of it, and they were logical and rational, and really did a great job. So, you know, as Chair of the Boards and Commissions, I would just like to say, boy, it is so great that we have so many volunteers who really want to give up their time and their energy and their efforts, and share their wisdom and patience with the city of Peoria, because really, we couldn't do this without you. And so, you know, you just did such a great job. And I think the people are going to be pleased once they do, once they do get some lighted fields, because obviously, we really need them in the northern part of the city. And that Camino Alago area, it's not done growing. You know, there's some very small amounts of neighborhoods now, but there's very large parcels still of vacant land that are going to be developed into more families with children who are going to need to play ball. And, you know, we just need to make this a neighborhood where kids can come out at night and do something with team spirit, with their families, you know, with their friends, and it's a very wholesome thing to do. So I'm very much in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no more requests to speak. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Carla, seconded by Mr. Ames. This is 25R, grant Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority, fiscal year 2014. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. Unanimous, very much. We have no call of the public requests. Reports from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett, and Council members. Just a couple of items under my report this evening. The first is by Andy Granger, and I think the council is aware that each year, as we participate as city employees in the United Way campaign, I ask one of the departments, one of the directors, to lead that... the departments, one of the directors, to lead that year's campaign. Last year, it was the then-budget department, but management budget department. This year, it was the engineering department, and Andy Granger led the effort. And both were successful, and Andy's going to speak a little bit about both, a little bit about last year, but more about this year as the effort culminated on Halloween. And that's one of the nice traditions we have. We blend a Halloween celebration at the lunch hour for employees with the culmination of the annual giving campaign for United Way. And again, this year, we had a lot of fun. So, Andy?
Thanks, Carl. Mayor, members of the council, as Carl stated, the purpose of this presentation is twofold. One is to report on the campaign efforts for 2013 for the United Way fundraising campaign, as well as present a plaque to council for the 2012 campaign efforts that we received from United Way that recognizes us as a top performer in fundraising from United Way. As Carl stated, the engineering department led the effort this year for the United Way campaign, and we coordinated several events to help raise awareness for United Way, as well as help raise funds for the United Way campaign. Those included three bake sales at City Hall, the DCSB building, as well as the Public Safety Administrative Building, a fifty-fifty raffle, a golf contest, which we'll show pictures of in a minute for entry into the fifty-fifty raffle, a chili cook-off that was coordinated and planned by the planning department and the engineering department, and was very successful, as well as the wrap-up event on Halloween, which included a catered lunch from Carolina's, a costume contest, and then drawings, a raffle drawing for gift baskets that were prepared by several other departments. Here are some pictures of the chili cook-off, our first annual chili cook-off at Centennial Plaza, as well as the golf contest. You can see our deputy city manager, Susan Deludin, who is trying to chip on the upper level of Centennial Plaza into one of those small kiddie pools down below. If she makes it into a circle, then she gets a fifty-fifty raffle ticket. And Susan was adamant that she was going to get it done, and after several tries, did make it in there and received several tickets.
They're still working on filling the divots out there.
Yeah. Mr. Sefton wasn't very happy with us as far as tearing up his turf. We also, as I stated, we had the costume contest as part of our closing ceremonies, as well as we had several performers on our city staff who sang. And we want to give a special thanks to Tim Iden from our fire department, who emceed the event this year and did a great job. You can also see on the bottom right the picture of our executive bobbleheads, our two deputy city managers and our city manager, courtesy of the city clerks department. In closing, I want to give a special thank you to Tim Iden, as I stated, who emceed the event. The leadership committee, our liaison committee, we had liaison for each department who helped spearhead the fundraising activities for each of the departments. A special thank you to Julie Beloit from the engineering department, who really did a lot of the heavy lifting and coordinating these events, and of course, our council for supporting us on this event. So with that, just to give a summary of what our results were, we had two-hundred-and-thirty-three donors this year. Our average donation per pledge was two-hundred-and-eight dollars, which is an increase from last year, which was a hundred-and-ninety dollars. Our total pledge amount was forty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-ten dollars. We raised in those special events that we just discussed, eleven-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars for a total of forty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars raised for the United Way effort. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Congratulations on this.
Thanks, Andy. You did a nice job.
Thank you.
The next item under my report is a brief commercial from John Sefton on the upcoming holiday event in Old Town.
Check one, two. Check, check, one, two. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, mayor and council, we're very, very happy to announce yet another of Peoria's traditional event, special events. The Twenty-seventh Annual Old Town Holiday Festival will be held Friday, December sixth, from five to nine P.M. You might want to schedule a special study session just before that. The event will feature live entertainment, a visit from Santa, snow play area, yes, it's going to snow in Peoria, inflatables, hay rides, a kids' zone, cookie decorating, and a crafters market. So if you want to get some early shopping done for the holidays, visit our Twenty-seventh Annual Old Town Holiday Festival. We'll also be featuring a coral contest, the high school coral contest, and Theater Works will be hosting a performance of A Christmas Carol. Again, that's the Twenty-seventh Annual Old Town Holiday Festival on Friday, December sixth, five to nine P.M. in downtown Osuna Park.
Thank you, John. I have a couple more items that are not in the printed packet, but I want to mention to council. Also, some good news. The first is that last week, November fourteenth, the governor held her Celebration of Innovations Award. And of course, last week you received, or last meeting, you received an update on the success of BioInspire. Well, I'm very pleased to announce to you tonight that at the governor's award ceremony, the BioInspire Innovator of the Year was for Yola Health Services. That's one of the companies that began in BioInspire, and it was recognized by the governor as the Innovator of the Year. And this is the one that is working on technology for those of us that wear these. So it won't be too long before I'll be able to shed these with the technology that Yola has put forward. So I think that's a real tribute to the work of BioInspire and our incubator. The last item I would mention is also some real positive news. Last year, at the employee awards, one of the employees that was recognized was Officer Cousins for his work on the Students with Aspiring Goals program in the school district, SWAG. That program partners with the school district, PPOA, and the police department, as well as this year, the Phoenix Suns, to allow two-hundred students from the Peoria School District as a part of that SWAG program to go to a basketball game, and that's tomorrow night. So two-hundred kids will be going from Peoria to a Suns game as a part of that SWAG program. And so that's some continuing success for that program. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to comments from the council. We'll start with Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just have a brief update of the Youth Advisory Board meeting. The Youth Advisory Board sent out surveys to local high schools, and last meeting, we got those surveys' results back, and we're in the process of drafting up a youth bill of rights for the students in Peoria. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leone?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to add to it what Andy Granger said. It was great that United Way was there, that we had the dinner. I was one of the service, and the band was good. We had some great performance. And if you was there, you would enjoy yourself. I was really surprised when I heard that Walt could sing, you know, but he did a great job. I just want to thank Andy and his volunteers and everybody else that worked it. I know that some guy standing beside me serving with the big nose, and I think that was city manager. But anyway, they did a great job. Again, I want to thank Andy Granger and his staff and his team for putting a great show on. And I try to beat every year to help serve, and I enjoy myself just watching everybody have a good time. The other thing I want to mention that, on November the tenth, at Vio Vista Park, we had a great run, Veterans Day run, and it was just great. They put a great, they put a great run on. They had plenty of food. There's about two-hundred-and-fifty runners. And that's great when you get all these people to come in that don't live in Peoria. And I talked to some people that lived in Phoenix and some even lived in Scottsdale. So it's great when they come in and they anticipate with the Peoria, and they all did a great run. Ron Ames and I walked the one mile. We came in last, and the people who ran the five K, which is three-point-one miles, they even beat us. But I did want to say it was a great event, and I hope we just keep on doing it. The last thing I want to mention that, every Saturday from nine to two at Park West, it's on Northern Avenue, right near Ninety-Ninth Avenue, they have organic markets. So come on down, and I think you'll enjoy it. And there's a lot of good vendors there, and you can buy a great, a lot of food, a lot of vegetables, and anything you want. They got all kinds of vendors there. Thank you. God bless each and every one of you. God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carlet?
Thank you. I just wanted to bring up something that already happened. It is Eighth Great Grill Fest. It happened a few weeks ago, and I just got a brief summary on some of the stats. There were fourteen-hundred-and-sixty-four tickets issued for this event. But the real thing I want to say tonight is we got ninety-eight thousand dollars in television spots that PBS provided. In addition to that, there was a hundred, about a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars in free promotional media that we received for this event. And that is all bringing accolades to Peoria and, you know, getting us some recognition, duly deserved recognition, I have to say, because it was a tremendous event. Really gorgeous day and a gorgeous location. And so, you know, that was a success all the way around, and I hope that we continue to do that. And also, I have to bring up, and I know a lot of other people will too because most of us were there, the grand opening of Maxwell Technologies happened last week. And they have an amazing facility, and they will be doing a lot of hiring in the upcoming months. So that's a very good thing for the city of Peoria. And I'll let a lot of other people tell you more about that. But it's very exciting that we're finally moving forward with some of those employers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. On the tenth, like Mr. Leone, I attended the veterans' run. What a great turnout they had. I was lucky enough to be able to help present the awards and just congratulate all those winners and everybody that participated from young to old. Their spirit was just incredible, and I appreciate them coming out and taking part in the event. Like Councilman Carlet said, I also attended the Maxwell Technology opening phenomenal facility. Just words can't even describe what was taking place inside that facility. I had no idea. You know, I'd heard stories about it, read articles, but until you actually see it, it was just an incredible experience. Last night, I was fortunate enough to attend Deer Valley Road Improvement Project Meeting, and we had about forty-five or fifty homeowners come out. And thanks to Andy Granger and his group, answered a lot of questions. We had McDott there as well, answering questions for the county. So a lot of questions from both, you know, the county residents, the city residents, and luckily, they were able to get most of their answers resolved. And if not, then staff took those questions back, and we'll be addressing them. But I appreciate everybody coming out and asking those questions because it's very important that when we have those public meetings, you guys, everybody comes out and participates in the process so that your voice is heard. Lastly, again, I want to just remind everybody of the upcoming meeting at the Glendale City Chamber about the billboard hearing. It is going to be on Thursday, December fifth, at six o'clock, and that's at the Glendale City Chambers at fifty-eight-fifty West Glendale Avenue. I implore the people of Peoria and specifically Willow District, those affected, you need to come out and have your voices heard. If you want these billboards stopped, you have to come or voice your concern. And lastly, just want to wish everybody a happy holiday. We're in the beginning of the holidays, and wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week.
Thank you. Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I don't have a whole lot to report this evening, I am looking forward to attending the SWAG event tomorrow with Chief Mentor and a couple other people. Look forward to being able to network with some of the youth and kind of get their opinions. There'll be a lot of youth attending, and I'm looking forward to hearing what they have to say, what they think about the programs Peoria is implementing, and what they think about the SWAG event. And that's realistically all I have to report, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Ames?
Yes, I've been busy as some of the others and attended some of the same events, Veterans Day, great event honoring veterans. And we had the races before, all different age grades, and male and female as well. And Carlo and I did walk the one mile, and he implied everyone beat us. Only the winner, everyone running in the one mile beat us, but only one beat us in terms of the, was it the three K? And that was the winner of the three K. So we didn't do that badly. But, you know, I had to keep Carlo moving. And after that event, and some others attended too, and maybe Bob will talk about it, the Home for Veterans, and that was a home built. It's a national program, and they built, I don't know, fifty, sixty homes already. And this was the first one in Peoria. And the person was a Master Sergeant in our current theaters. And his last one, he lost both of his legs in an accident. So, not an accident, really, an enemy action. And it was just heartwarming to see that, and a nice home. And he's got a nice little office. As you enter the home, it's off by itself, a smaller door. So, and he said he's going to enjoy that. So that was wonderful. I did attend, BioExcel had a function, and it brought a number of investors together. This was at a home in somewhere, it's not actually in Paradise Valley, just below, but up high. And I think it's Camelback Mountain up there, and a large home and about forty investors. So Mary Ann there is doing an excellent job of bringing people to invest in our six companies and a seventh coming on board in our BioExcel, our incubator program. And we just heard one of them won a governor's award. And so we took a risk to do this, but we're already ahead of the game. And it looks like it's taken off very well, and we're already in the black. And some of these companies are going to be very successful, and they're going to bring other companies. And then we also had the Maxwell Technology, which finally moved here, and very interesting operation there. And they're going to do most of their manufacturing, and eventually, I think, all of it for right now, in Peoria. And they got a number of machines along the assembly line, and they start out with material that comes from coconuts, carbon from coconuts. And there are just two types of coconuts that qualify for the kind of carbon that's needed. And this is carbon that in the end of the process that it goes through, it's poured into a vat and worked over, and then eventually makes its way to become a film. It's got to be the right kind of depth to the film for the different applications, and they electrify the ends of it. And it's a lot of intellectual property there that they own. And what it is, is it becomes a film that stores energy that is from batteries or wind turbines and so on. And they're going to, it's going to be a very successful company. They're already quite successful, and they're worldwide, and they sell a lot, actually, in China to the buses there to store the energy from the batteries. So that was an exciting, as some others mentioned, tour that we all had. I want to mention that it appeared in the paper today, but I guess Carl already knew about it. We're one of the top ten in, what, Kepler's Magazine, a well-respected, economic-focused magazine, top ten places to live for younger retirees. So if you're a younger retiree or even younger than that or older, it's a great place. We know our amenities. And they talk about the good value and cost of living here. It is lower than in many other places, including other places in the valley around us. So excellent place to live. And if you're listening and don't live here, you might want to move to Peoria. And you just heard a lot tonight about the various development that we're doing. And those are the things I wanted to talk about. So best to everyone, Thanksgiving coming up, and enjoy, and God bless all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Lieutenant.
Thank you, Mayor. I, along with the mayor and several of the council people, also visited Maxwell Technologies. It's a very interesting and high-tech facility, where, as Councilmember Ames said, they turn carbon powder into sheets of carbon with very sophisticated equipment. I had a chance to talk with the vice president. He said at their build-out that they'll be employing over five-hundred employees, and these are really very good jobs. Interestingly enough, they are Interestingly enough, they are already outproducing their San Diego office by 4 to 1, and they're really very happy to be in Peoria, and they just signed a 10-year lease, so they're going to be here for a long time. I also attended the Veterans Run, had a chance to distribute awards to the runners. But I also attended the event where they gave the keys to the house to Army First Sergeant Mike Leonard. There were over 100 people attended, and Mike arrived in a motorcade led by the Peoria Police and Fire, along with about 40 motorcyclists. I drove out with Councilmember Edwards, and we happened to run into that motorcade, and he said to me, this is really what makes Peoria special. We kind of go above and beyond and make things really good for our citizens, and I couldn't agree more. The way he arrived at his house was really, really interesting. The home was provided by Homes for Our Troops. It's a four-bedroom. It's completely accessible for wheelchair users. Our mayor, along with Ken Bennett and Trent Frank, spoke, and it was really a humbling and a wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramy. Just a couple of things on the Homes for the Troops. He did come in procession with the Freedom Riders and the Fire Department, and also the police, but he was in the Batmobile, if you remember the old Batman series. He arrived in the Batmobile. It was really, really kind of an interesting thing. Sergeant Leonard lost both legs on his fourth deployment in Afghanistan when an IED exploded under his Jeep. And this is his home now. This is the first Homes for the Troops home to be built in the state of Arizona. I'm really proud that they selected Peoria as the location. And Maxwell Technologies, yeah, it was really interesting. The other thing that we were told is next year, they're bringing their research and development people out here. So they are transitioning from San Diego to the City of Peoria. I think that's an amazing thing for us. Finally, on the billboards, if you can't attend the Glendale meeting on December 5th, you can start sending emails to the council members expressing your displeasure with the proposed 85-foot uglies that they're going to put up there. And I would suggest that you send the emails even if you are going to go. It's going to make a difference. It really is going to, it's going to impact all of us. And finally, and last but not least, for those of you who probably all should have gotten Get Active from Peoria AZ, where it says Peoria City Council, there's been one change at the bottom, Jacob has been added. So congratulations. And with that, we are adjourned from Peoria City Council meeting, and we are coming back as the Vastancia Community Facilities District Board meeting. Would the clerk please note the rule? The first and only item up is the consent agenda. Could I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by, no, you got a council member, board member, Carlet, seconded by board member Ames. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. Is unanimous. Amazingly, we have no call to the public items. We are adjourned.